He's going to be a partner for us in the business. And he's going to take care of your office and go over the road and buy vehicles and trucks to help us in the business. We'd like that, it would be a lot easier to have him on the license.
Okay.
For him to buy.
In your name for the record, please?
Dalton Mendez Jr.
Thank you.
Why do you need him on as an owner on?
Well, he can be an owner, right? It's because we own the license that's on. But the property's in the trust. He needs to be able to buy and auctions. It's a lot easier to have him on the license.
And he's going to be buying?
And will get vehicles. He's going to be helping with the office, he's going to be a partner with us.
So when he goes in, he's going to buy up for you?
Yeah. We're still, I'm staying home. There's no way that we're going to, we're not moving.
Do you have anything to say?
Yes, I have something to say. I've been on that street 83 years. And it was nice. And now every time you turn around, you've got cars with junk on it, this both sides of the street. And I look, my line is right next to his property. I look over, there's a bunch of cars in there that wasn't there last week. They're full of cars. The fence is all broken down for over a year. Never been touched. I try to be nice to them, but now they want to do this and I'm against it.
Well, he's not changing his licenses. License is still the same, they're just adding a name to it. But, but you do have some issues that, right, we're not, he can't get any more or any less than he already has. We've already approved that. So the only thing we're doing is adding a name to his license. So nothing else is, we can't change anything else.
Yeah, but if you put another person in there, the things won't change. Little by little, it'll change. It'll, it'll change.
Well, not by, by law, he can't. By our variances in our, in our bylaws, he can't change it. So otherwise, we can revoke his license. So if he's doing something wrong, his license can be revoked at any time. You know that. Okay.
Julie, what do you also want to say?
I have a lot of requests, I even added my name to it. And we discussed that, and I'm going to fix the fence. I would like to fix it also. The property protected, it also is looking good.
Yeah, I mean, we, you were here to do business in town, but you have to, you also have to be a good neighbor and be...
Well, a lot of his street's full of fence, but I don't want to fight over that.
Right, but, no, let's not go down that road. Okay. But just as long as you can be good neighbors to one another and...
I have no problem.
Okay. He's going to fix the fence.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the only time that fence gets fixed, something like this come up.
Okay, but...
Other than that, he'd left it until it all fall apart.
But we can't fix it if we don't know about it. So if you have an issue, you know to call.
We had no vehicles there on that side.
I told them not to bother.
We had no vehicles there, so it was just woods over there.
Yeah.
Now there's vehicles. We put in, like a week ago, we put some, we put four vehicles out there. So that's why they're seeing a lot of vehicles. It'll get fixed.
Okay.
What do you do with the vehicles?
Some use Autobots.
Use Autobots, right, you take them apart and so forth?
Yeah.
How many vehicles does your license go to?
Nonrestrictions. It's not, it's nonrestrictive, honestly.
Can you make a note of that? Thank you.
It always says the nonrestrictive. Most licenses in the area are nonrestrictive. Licenses. We, well, we, I think we've been pretty good.
Okay.
All around, and a lot other than that. We never make loud noises, we don't make any dust. We have shells in all of our rollers, so our fire rollers are not making dust. We don't make loud noises, we stick to our hours, eight to five Saturdays, eight to two. And I think we've gone along with it.
We just want to make sure Steve's that way.
How long have you been doing business?
Sixteen years.
Sixteen years?
Seventeen, sixteen, seventeen years, yeah. We like to tell them, "Hey, John, we..."
Is anybody else here to comment on adding a name to D and M?
I'll make a motion to approve to add the name to the license with the caveat that the fence gets fixed.
And no changes with the license at all?
No, that, we can't change the license until it comes out for renewal.
Right, I'll second it.
A motion made and seconded to approve the license with the caveat that the fence is fixed and the license doesn't change in any way, shape, or form. And we remain the same. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? If you need to go to approve that.
So if the fence is going to get fixed soon?
And understand, if you think you have problems, you can always come to the board. If things like fences need to be fixed, you think...
It's going to be fixed now. And if it doesn't, you call me.
It will be.
Okay.
It will be.
Thank you. You're all set. Thank you.
You're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is...
You stay in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. I like your company.
Oh, you want me to go?
No, I like your company. I like your company.
Stay, John. Stay so you can keep us in line.
Keep her in line.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you clarified that.
I feel your friendly.
Right, next on our agenda is a discussion with Algonquin Gas representatives regarding access to the Free Town property. Anybody here from Algonquin Gas? Could you identify yourselves, please?
Sure. My name is Frank Gessner. I'm the project manager for land and right-of-way for Algonquin Gas Transmission Company. With me is John Sheridan, who was our director, you know, for government relations. But thank you for inviting us here this evening. I have some handouts that I'd like to provide you. If you go to page two.
Thank you.
On three, there are two properties that are owned by the town off of Ann Record Lane that Algonquin is seeking permission to disert. This segment of the project, the project is a joint venture project between EverSource and National Grid and Algonquin Gas. It involves multiple states, New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts, various segments of pipeline along the Algonquin system. In New York and Connecticut, as well as in Mass, will be taken up and replaced with a larger diameter pipeline. The reason for this is to increase peak day supplies and also to increase the LNG storage capacity along, along the system. The project is designed for 60% of the project supplies will go to electric generation in New England. It will help overall, you know, lower the electricity rates here in New England. And it'll also provide additional supplies of natural gas, low-cost national gas, for, you know, local distribution companies like EverSource and National Grid. But before we can, we haven't filed anything with FERC. We, FERC, obviously, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has to approve the project. We haven't filed anything with them. We're looking to file what they call a pre-final status in November, on November 2nd, you know, of this year. And we ask for permission to begin the process, which is, we'll file our various resource reports for the entire project. And they'll receive a, a letter with a docket number. When I receive that information, I'll send a letter to all our property owners in all the states advising them, you know, with the docket number that we have filed. And then in January, there'll be, January, February, they'll be able to call open houses, which are part of the process. The open house is similar to the landowner information meetings that we held. And actually have one tonight that we're holding. Except, the big difference is that the information that we've been able to gather through survey, so property owners that come into these meetings want to know, usually you're looking at a wide car. You know, is it always going to stay that wide or is it something that's going to be smaller? Now, where's the pipe going to be located? Is there temporary workspace? Will my trees be removed? If so, is there something that you can do? So by asking for survey permission, and that's all we're asking for, we're not asking for rights and land, we're not buying anything, we're asking for permission to come on the property, the town-owned property, as well as private properties, and asking for permission to survey. And the survey consists of three pieces. One is the civil survey. The second one is the environmental survey.
Civil survey being, so everybody knows?
Civil survey is where they'll come out and they'll look for the center line of the pipeline, they'll look to identify where the center line of the proposed pipeline would be. The environmental surveys, they look for any type of wetlands or any type of environmental growth, more or less, plants and stuff like that, and they identify all that. The archaeologists will come out and they will look to see if there's any, you know, type of archaeological work that they need to do. So they'll come on the property, if they need to dig a hole, it's two feet, I think it's two feet square and two feet deep. They sift the earth and look to see if there's any artifacts. And if they find nothing, they put it all back in the hole. So those are the three surveys.
So in essence, you simply want to walk through the property, survey it, look at it, no removal of anything, no violence to plants or anything like that, or trees.
The only thing that they, they may do in, when they do the civil work, is to do some, it's this brush, because they do, if it's heavily wooded, they'll take a machete, they'll make, you know, they'll, they'll cut. Now, one of the things that we ask them is that if they're doing the cutting, you know, on the properties, they have to carry that stuff out. They just can't just leave a mess, you know, behind. They've got to clean it up after this. And one thing that I do, you know, on all my projects, is my right-of-way staff walk with the surveyors. So whether it's the civil crews, or the environmental crews, or the archaeological crews, there's a right-of-way person, you know, with them to ensure that we're respecting everybody's property as we're walking through.
Any removal of any trees?
By me?
Do you remove any trees during the survey?
No, we do not cut any trees that are greater than two inches in diameter. You know, if there's a particular tree that's on a private property or on the town property that is a landscape tree or something, we don't cut that.
I'm not asking of wooded trees. You're saying anything that's less than two inches you could cut?
We could potentially cut. I'm not saying we would.
Why would you cut that?
If they were, if the surveyors were taking, using their transit and they were taking line of sight and that particular tree was in the way, they would cut it. We discourage them from cutting anything. But I'm not going to stand here tonight and tell you absolutely, they're not going to cut anything, when they may have to cut, you know, a particular branch or, you know, a, something that's two inches or smaller, you know, through. They understand that if they do cut it, they have to cut it flush with the ground, so there's no punchy stick, you know, meaning no sharp, you know, woodies, you know, sticking above the surface. Any stakes that they put in, sometimes property owners ask, you know, if you put a stake in, take the stake out. If, I don't want it left behind. If you come in with your environmental flags, don't leave them behind. Put your environmental flags in, your GPS data in, you take those flags with you when you leave. The property is just the way it was when we left. Some property owners ask for, you know, notification. We want to know when you're coming on the property. You know, 48 hours or 24 hours or...
Did we provide that to anybody?
Yeah, because they may want to, you know, their home may be located close to where we're doing survey work. So if they're looking out their back window, they want to know, who is that out there? If it's us, we provide them with notification. If the town wanted notice, you know, on these properties, you know, that we're going to be out there a particular day on the permit, which I have a copy of the two permits, you know, with me. And this is a standard form permit. It has attached with it the drawing, a reduced drawing, as well as a description of the survey. So the last page of the permit describes the type of survey, the civil, and what's being done on civil, what's being done on the, on environmental, what's being done on the, or archaeological. So there's three, three pages to the permit.
What happens if a, if a home, a landowner doesn't want you on the property?
Then we stay off the property. It stays red.
So how do you progress?
You do it by mapping. You use mapping, submit to the mapping that we have. The problem with that is if the property owner comes to the open house and says, "Well, where is it going to be on my property? I don't like it here. Can you move it a little bit? Can you save some trees?" Well, without having survey permission, it's hard to answer their question. And we explain that to them. We've done that during the landowner information meetings, where property owners came over and said, "I have a standing group of trees right here. I really don't want to have to lose them because I'll have to look at my neighbor." Now, I didn't get into what the reasoning was, but I said, "Well, if we can make, you know, get survey permission, we can move the line." And you're looking at a study court that's 300 feet wide. So the line will move.
So when you say, I'm looking at this map here, and it shows two green lines, dotted green lines?
That's a study court.
That's 300 feet wide?
Right, that's a study court.
So it's, that's a total of 300 feet?
That's correct.
Do you, you have some flexibility moving the line, the red line of the pipeline?
Yes.
In and out?
So the pipelines...
We've already, we've already looked at some locations. I went out last week.
Great.
And I've already made some suggestions to stay out of the backyards, to stay over on the cranberry bards, rather than removing any screening behind homes. So that way there, the screening that's there can stay. But I'm, you know, one department, that's the land department. You know, engineering takes a look at it, the environmentalists have to look at it. So it's not just one person making the decision, we make recommendations to each other.
I have another question.
Sure.
You're Jan, right?
No, no, my name is Karen.
Okay, Karen, let me just, let's finish with these guys and I'll give you a chance to speak.
Thank you very much.
What I want to ask you is that, let's say, you know, you progress at your own speed and so forth, and at some point, you're going to get a federal permit?
Yes.
And if the feds give you the permit, what does that allow you to do?
If the federal government provides us with a certificate of public convenience and necessity, then we can build the project. We can build the pipeline.
So what happens to somebody that doesn't want you running the pipe through their, their property?
Okay. It's a very good question. I mean, we sit with every property owner, we let them know, we're trying to negotiate with you, we've made offers, we've had independent appraisers look at it, we had those same appraisers meet with the property owners, trying to come up with a value, you know, to purchase the easement interest. If we cannot, if we're just, it just doesn't happen, can the property, you know, be taken by eminent domain? The answer is yes. That's a last resort. And a project that I've completed over my 45 years, you know, with the company, typically that ranges anywhere between 2 and 5%. Now, when we send final offer letters out, those number, those percentages are higher, but it, many property owners wait until they get that final offer.
Now, are you actually taking the property or are you just taking an easement?
Only taking an easement interest.
And how, how wide of an area are you talking about if you had to do that?
If it's a 24-foot wide, 24, 24-inch diameter pipeline, that would be a 50-foot permanent easement. There'd be 25 to 35 feet of temporary workspace. It's just temporary, so it's a temporary easement. So yes, that would be cleared as part of the project, but that 35 feet is, is allowed to go back and grow to, you know, what was there prior to, whatever was, you know, whatever was growing there before. We don't replant it.
On its own, you don't replant it?
Right, we don't replant it.
So how, how much space are you going to need, once that temporary, and the pipeline is in, how much space are you going to need to go up and down there?
To clear?
To keep clear?
50 feet.
25 on each side of the pipe?
25 on each side, or 20 and 30. Until, at first, they have to do the survey. You know, then, that's when we have definitive answers to those, to those questions. You know, typically, I'm telling you, a 24-inch line is 50 feet. All right? If it's something smaller than that, like a 20-inch or an eight-inch line, you're down to 30 feet. Until we complete our survey work, you know, I'll wait for the engineers to come back to me, because we have to put that in our filing. We have to justify why we need 50 feet, why we need the temporary workspace. FERC reviews all that information.
A woman named Jan McHumber wrote a nice letter, and I thought that would be you. Now, this isn't an open meeting where everybody's going to speak about that, that's not what this meeting was designed for. But I will allow a couple of people to speak, and since you're chomping at the bit, you got something to say.
All right. My name is Karen Valantri, president of Hands Across the River Coalition, which are basically, we are concerned about the health and safety of the greater New Bedford area, which would include any plants which would have any type of material that could be toxic to people, butters and people in the general area and further. I just wanted to make mention to you, if I may, that I don't want you to feel compelled that you have got to make a decision tonight for permission to allow anyone to set foot on town-owned property. There is so much information about this project that needs to be disseminated to everyone. There also needs to be a public meeting for Free Town residents to give them a chance to air their concerns. So before going forward with any type of permission, and as you can see with the amount of material that you have been receiving tonight, you need the chance to be able to review this and come to a more comfortable situation where you can make a decision at a, at a later time. Now, I just want to make mention with the research we've been doing, we're amazed at the size of these two LNG plants that they are proposing putting up. If you recall, the gas tanks that are along Route 93 in the Boston area with the big stripes on them, those are 146 feet tall. The ones that they're proposing for Free Town, or Acushnet, I should say, are approximately 177 feet tall.
And 250 feet wide?
About that, yeah. So you have a lot of issues with the size of these tanks. They are proposed to be the largest in the northeast region. Any mistakes, any accidents, even the pipeline company, as we've heard, have a number of violations, like 53, I believe it is?
59.
59 violations already. So any leaks, and it's important to know that any of this material leaking can travel for miles before it comes to an ignition site. At that point, it can ignite and then fire back to the source and cause a major issue. Now, if you Google LNG tanks and safety issues back in 1944, there was a major explosion in Ohio. Number of people that died were injured, property and so forth and so on with that sized tank at that time. There was also something more recent in Staten Island, New York. So again, I just, you know, we plead as an organization with you to, to review the materials that were presented to you tonight, and please allow some time for transparency of more information about the project, and please allow a public meeting for the Free Town residents, to allow them to speak out and air their concerns about this project, because this is a very big project, a very big project. So again, please don't decide or hastily decide tonight that you've got to approve anyone taking that first step on town-owned land at the start of this project, that there's still so much information that's got to be delivered. Thank you.
Jan, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Please.
I too am concerned.
Jan, identify yourself.
Jan McHumber. I live on Keene Road, which is the proposed route for this to go down.
From Free Town?
I'm sorry?
Are you from Free Town?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's not only about the safety because of the size of these tanks, but when he says he's going to do sightings and only remove two-inch trees, I'd like to present you with a few pictures that I took on my property of the density of the trees that are in this area. I have 426 feet of frontage by 50 feet. That's a, a half acre of land that they will be taking. I have not met with you, nor have you talked with me about eminent domain or buyouts, ease or buyouts, or prices, or anything like that. I have only been approached by the people that are going to be doing the surveying, and they indeed told me that they would cut trees down if they are in the path of the surveying line. There are, there's not much more than six inches of area that wouldn't be within a sightline. They're going to cut trees on both the town property and on my property that, because there's no path, there's no open area, there's no sightline on this property. As you can see, all the ferns that are in the, the property, that's all wetland on both sides of the road, of Keene Road is wetland. I don't know how they could get a, a proper approval to go down that way, on either side of the road. It's just, I could not build a house on that property because it was wetlands. And I was told that they have different rules that they go by for FERC, that they can take wetlands and do what they want with them.
That's the federal permit, so they're simply asking for us to walk in the property?
Well, it, it leads to this.
I understand.
And you need to be aware of what's going to happen. I was very disappointed to see that there was no representation from Free Town at the Acushnet meeting. And I feel that the people of Free Town don't realize the magnitude of this, because nobody's talking about it.
I live three miles from Free Town.
Yeah.
The pipeline goes down my street, isn't it?
The pipeline is already down your street?
Exactly.
Okay. It's not this 24-inch line, and it doesn't lead to a 250-foot wide by 170-foot tall two tanks. That's a huge, huge...
That end of the, that end of this many, many steps is way beyond what a selectman in Free Town can ever hope to do, one way or the other, whether you were four against the hundred.
But you, you need to be aware.
Oh, we are?
You need to know the dangers of this.
I understand.
You need to know of the 20,000 leaks on the line that already exists.
Where's that line that you're talking about?
This line?
20,000 leaks in Massachusetts.
That's how many leaks there are?
On one line?
On one line.
Is it the same pipeline you're talking about?
No. They're probably referring to local distribution company lines, and not talking about high-pressure lines on the Algonquin system.
If those lines had been maintained, there would not be leaks in them. What is the maintaining procedures?
You need to be talking about the Algonquin system, not about local distribution company. I mean, there's two different, you know, pipelines, two different histories.
But the same outcome?
No.
If there's a leak?
The two, if you talk about Algonquin's lines, they've been here in Free Town.
I'm not going to allow a debate between people here. This is, you know, you, you listened to the gentleman's presentation, you certainly enjoyed your presentation also.
Could he answer the question, how they can do a sightline in that dense of a populated, free populated area?
Well, actually, that's, that's not what this article's about. They're simply here looking to do a survey. That's not something I can see, certainly getting into that at some particular point in time, because this is, like you said, it's, it's one step of a thousand-step program, probably. And I'm sure this will go on forever. I think your federal permit, you're requesting it around 2018 or something like that? And that was, you know, that's a few years down the line, so this kind of conversation is as you're anticipating. I'm sure it'll come up over and over again, and I'm sure there'll be many, many meetings that we can all attend as concerned citizens. They simply asked this particular step for the town, approval from the town, pretty much walking our property.
Where is the property in Free Town?
It's off of Keene Road. It's between...
It looks like to me it's, it's between Nysley and Route 18.
And Route 18?
Nysley and Route 18. Two, two small parcels.
For us, it's just a small, little piece of land.
Yeah.
And I, I do value your input and your concerns, but what's in front of the board tonight is simply a permitting process to look at. And although we all have concerns, I think the board wants to discuss this, and your opinions, fellow board members?
If it's between Nysley and Route 18, how does that fall against Keene Road?
So what is the proposed route now down Ann Record Lane and...
It looks to me like it's down Ann Record Lane, and it takes a right onto Keene, and
goes right down Nessus Lane.
How will you make the turn at Enricke Lane to go down when there's a house right at the end of that road?
That's why we're asking for permission to survey. Until we walk on the properties and complete our survey work, you know, we will not be able to put a line on paper. Right now, what you see is the center line of a corridor.
Yeah.
And a study court. That's all you can say.
This type of information will be available, everybody gets it, I'm guessing.
This is the, actually, what you have in front of you is the maps that were used for the landowner information meetings. And what I've been pushing hard for is to get the survey, so that we can collect the information, and get that on the next set of maps that will be used for the next meetings, which are going to be held in January and February of, you know, two sixteen, next year.
You guys looking for the shortest way? Is that what you're doing? Are you looking for the shortest route?
We're looking for a route that is balanced. When I say balanced, you know, we look at not only the landowner impacts, you know, to screening properties, we look at the environmental impacts, and we look at the constructability. So it's not necessarily the shortest route, but it's a route that takes all of that into consideration.
Would you go down a roadway?
Yeah. This project actually does go down a roadway. It goes down, right now, we're looking at going down.
Enricke Lane?
Right.
And then what about when you get to Keene Road, right down the center of Keene Road? Because that runs right into Nessus Lane.
That's correct. Right on that road. That's what we're looking at, is going, constructing right down that road.
So why would you want to cross other people's property then, if you've got?
Coming from our existing pipeline, from our existing G, G-one lines.
Yeah.
Which are twenty and our eight-inch lines.
Up on Roundsville Drive?
Right. That's exact direction. So we'll be tying in there, and then, so to get from that point down, we would cross, you know, private lands.
Right. But the people, she's on Keene Road. I mean, if you went right down the center of Keene Road, it's not going to affect her property.
Well, that's why, if I can, I'll meet with you after tonight, after we leave and go over there. And I'll go over the drawings with you, and maybe give you some assurances of, you know, what we're looking at.
Right now, it's fifty feet in my front yard.
Okay. Let's take a look at that before you leave the scene.
Okay.
All right.
So I think maybe this first, step one is necessary, so everybody needs to know.
Can I?
Absolutely.
Thanks. I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I'm gonna take this in steps. That's how I do things. And I know that this is your first step, right?
That's correct.
But I have an issue with the first step. I don't have an issue with you walking on the property, or doing your survey. I have an issue, first of all, I'm not sure, and I wish the town administrator were here, but he's not, I'm not sure if our attorneys have looked at this. But it's kind of vague when you say expressly subject to the condition that the town of Free Town have paid for any and all damages to the property or crops that may be directly caused by septic activities. That's very vague to me. That, that, that means nothing. There's no monetary amount on here. There's no what specific damages you are going to cover or not cover. There's, this is just a blanket statement. That means nothing to me. Sorry.
Okay. It's, it's, it's a standard form.
Right.
All right. And some property owners sign it, some property owners hand it to their attorneys. You know, I mean, obviously, if we damage something on the property, you know, we're responsible for it. So by you taking it and, you know, having, you know, town council look at it, I don't have a problem with that.
When I look at this red line, you're not even going, that, that red line, that proposed line that you've got in there, and I know it's, you know, just a projection, but it doesn't even come across our property. Doesn't come across our property, you know?
Right. But we're, like I started, we're looking at a three-hundred-foot corridor, all right? At the end of the day, it may not hit your eye. And by doing the survey work, and when the survey work is complete, there is a letter that comes out from me that says, we completed our work. This is how, you know, your property's no longer impacted. You were considered an abutter to the project. You'll still get information from the project, because you're abutting the project. But right now, there's nobody that's directly affected, and there's nobody that's abutting the project. We put them all in one.
I think ours is good.
May I?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to put this off for two weeks. I'd like our town council, Jonathan, so to sign, to take a look at this, and give us his recommendations on this. This does not open up the gateway to have everybody from the woodwork come out and talk at, at our next meeting against this. This is so we can ensure that the town of Free Town is protected, and its residents are protected, and that we can get some sort of direction from town council. That's my, that's my motion.
Have a motion made and seconded to address this process. Would our town council, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So we're going to give this information. It's pretty much the policy of vote. We very rarely vote on anything that's put in front of us on the same day.
I'm gonna hand you my card.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Kingstown Council has it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir?
Thank you, Jan.
This your man?
Thank you.
Sir?
Bye, honey. Always. See that halo? I have a halo.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A little frustrating?
That's right.
Conservation Commission, too, with the wetlands.
You made your attempts, as I know.
Just follow Paul River, President of the Coalition for Responsible Siding of LNG Facilities. And the one quote that I can leave you with is what Gordon Shearer, the CEO of Weaver's Co. Energy said, when one of my members asked him, if there was ever a leak, or the tank compromised, what would happen? And he said, if we voted him, you'd have, I guess we'd have the world's largest Roman candle. We put it on our website. How could he deny it? There were a hundred and fifty people in the room. Just wanted to leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Next on our agenda. There's some representatives from.
Yes, there are. Hi, how are you? Nice to see you again.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
All right. Nice to see you again, Laura.
No.
So we're here to talk about the host agreement, perhaps signed it.
Here to answer any questions?
It's been, it's been given to town council. It's been worked on and worked over. I don't have any concerns right now.
When are you starting?
So this is one step on the process. We're working through finalizing the preliminary site plan, to get that in front of planning board. We're scheduled to close by the end of the year, and we'll begin construction after receiving building permits.
So when are you going to the planning board?
Right now, we're showing planning board in November. Once we get through, we've worked through, we had some site considerations to deal with, that we got through, finally got the footprint set on the buildings, and now we're working through the preliminary site plan to get it in front of planning board.
And you know, during site plan review, any other conditions? I mean, this, this post-agreement is something totally different than.
Right, this is, this is.
So I just want, I don't want you to think you're scot-free.
No, no, not at all.
It doesn't work like that.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the process. But this, for us at least, tins down that piece.
It's one step.
It's always one step.
I feel like we're, we're on step four, but this is a, a big step for us, to get this piece down, and kind of establish that formal relationship.
Thank God, the number of companies is an American, yes.
All right. So we have a motion.
Motion made. Motion made and seconded and signed. The host agreement, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I have two copies of, signed and notarized from our side.
Yeah, you got to.
And then I have a, an affidavit, minutes designated me the signer. And they were notarized in Colorado.
And you'll be doing a little more of the work for the site plan?
Right, the local permitting, correct? And I've been in touch with planning. And you looked at that, or if you remember last time, you mentioned the expedited permitting process.
Was it?
Yeah, this site is one of them. But in looking at.
You're welcome.
But I'm not, I'm not sure we're going to go that route. It's, it's, we're still considering it, because there are some added steps to go with that expedited route. Then they, once you do that, then they have a hundred and eighty days to make a decision. But in speaking with planning, there's a possibility we may get that decision in a hundred and eighty days anyways, so we don't have to do those initial steps, so we're still.
Fail your options.
Exactly.
Okay.
That was worth the flight back, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, not at all. I've got some stuff.
Stop and get some seafood on your way home. Take a damn old lobster.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks very much.
We'll see you again soon.
Good to see you again. Yeah. Thank you.
Bye. We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Nice to see you.
Good, and you?
Okay.
Take a five-minute recess.